We have an action-packed and jam-packed agenda for tonight. It's gonna be a lot of fun, so welcome. Good to see everyone here. The first item on the agenda is a special presentation by the bicentennial flag selection winner. And he's here in the audience tonight. Mike Como, do you want to come on up and take the podium? And if you don't mind giving a few explanations to what your flag design is, and I think we're gonna see your flag design real soon, but if you want to just start talking about it
Yeah.
Coming along here. We had 63 entries, and we had a special panel of judges. Bill Malazek, who is from, gosh, I should've had this written down. John Fetterman, I mean, yeah. Bill Malazek from, is he here?
No.
No.
Axiom, yeah. Great designer. Mary Lou Parry, Ted Feldstein, myself, Stephanie, and Ken Snyder. So we were the selection committee. And here is the winning design. It looks a little purple. It should be blue. So it's not coming up, right?
It's just a...
Mike, why don't you tell us who you are, where you live, and where you work?
All right. I'm Mike Como. I live here in Doylestown. And I work at the Doylestown Country Club.
What do you do there?
I'm a bussler at the pool.
Okay.
And I'm gonna be working in the clubhouse during school.
Good. And where do you go to school?
I'm going to Bucks County Community College.
Great. Okay. All right, so tell us about your design.
So, to make this design, I followed the principles that were given to us about flag design, about keeping things simple, using basic colors, using basic designs. So I stuck with three-color design, using green, gold, and blue. I think that the green represents purity in nature, which Doylestown has a lot of. I think the blue represents pride, and the gold represents prosperity. I chose the oak tree, seeing as Doylestown is a large producer of oak trees to this country. I chose the wheat to represent the large agricultural influence we've had throughout history. And I chose the three stars to tie in with our place in America and what we've done to serve our country.
Wow. Huh? What do you think?
It was great.
And I said John Fetterman. I meant Alan Fetterman, the great, impressive designer and artist. Geez, that's so bad. Anyway, so for this design, in this contest, chairman earns $1,000.
Thank you very much.
And your family? Is that your family?
Yep. My dad and my stepmother.
Well, welcome. You must be so proud. We are. And it's so great that you, like, you work in Doylestown Township. How awesome is that? Yeah. Yeah. Okay. You wanna get, come on up here, Mom and Dad?
Yep.
Look at Mike. Look at the chief. And this is really, a really bad representation. This is a beautiful blue, not purple, right? Am I right?
Yeah, protectors don't show...
That's not, that's not coming up, right?
Yeah.
It's kinda like Sinclair's shirt, but maybe a little brighter.
Yeah, right? Okay.
Yeah. Why the flag? There you go.
Congratulations. Thank you. You must be very proud.
Yes, thank you very much. We can't stay for the whole meeting.
No, you don't have to stay. You may not.
You get the check back then.
Pay for school, right? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Thanks.
What do you think, huh? It's our flag. It will go here, or, no, there. It's gonna replace this. It's gonna replace this, using this. Okay. Simple?
Similar?
Yes?
Are the colors represented on the screen representative of...
No.
No.
It's a more, it's a gold or...
It's a gold or a greener.
Or blue.
It's very different.
Yeah.
They really stand apart from each other.
Oh, it's, yeah, it's brilliant. Brilliant, yeah. Okay, so I'm really pleased about that, right? Mary Lou's here.
Yep.
I think that's it. Yep. Okay, great places. Central Park. David Schwartz.
Hi.
Thanks.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Dave Schwartz. I'm here with the APA Pennsylvania Chapter, here to present the 2018 Great Places Award for Central Park. Now, I have to open up quickly here with a brief apology. There seems to be a bit of a snafu in the mail. If anybody has good eyes, this says Cook River West Trail, Phases 1 and 2.
Oh.
That trail does not go through Doylestown as far as I know. So unfortunately, it's less a presentation, more of a preview of what you will get.
This is what it's gonna look like.
It's what it will look like, yes. I'll get it cleared up. First thing tomorrow, and you'll get your plaque. I do have window clings for you.
Oh, good.
It's not nothing. These are, you know, these are important.
What are they?
Window clings.
Window clings.
You put them, window clings. You can put them on.
Oh, okay.
If there are plaques in the park, you put them up there.
Oh, okay.
You put it on your car. If it's a great place, you know, it's up to you.
They stick?
They should. In theory, they stick.
Kind of color form.
Yes. But I did wanna just talk for a second about the park and why we chose it as a great place. Every year, we, I mean, this year in particular, we have a lot of great nominations for great places. And what I do usually when judging is I look and I check off the boxes, you know? And there are certain ones that are for, that you need for all projects, you know? Do they connect to neighboring houses and neighboring towns? Do they have passive and active recreation? Do they have a place for kids and for adults? And this year, a lot of those places met those burdens. If they don't, they're usually just kinda tossed out. But Central Park met those, but a lot of places did. So what I, so we looked at beyond that, what I usually try to find is something unique about the park. And there are a couple of things, I think, that about this park that are actually very, very interesting and inspiring. And one of them, obviously, is Kids Castle. That's more than a playground. It's, as the title would suggest, a castle. So it's a very neat kinda thing to add in. Environmental education, which I find very, very important, you know? There are studies out there now that indicate that towns that have more greenery in them, that have natural features around them, there is a reduced incidence of violent crimes. And there actually is some evidence out there that people like seeing trees and generally feel better about themselves. And starting that add with kids at a young age, I think is very, very important. Gives them appreciation. There is a native plant garden, which is my own personal thing, that really hits home for me because I live in Heatherford Township. I'm on the Environmental Advisory Committee, and we are building native plant rain gardens. So I'm very happy that that concept of native plants is taking off a little bit in this area. They're generally better for the environment, and they hold up a lot better than generally ones. But, you know, I think the big thing about Central Park, that every judge mentioned, was the St. Street Trail, which is a very, very cool thing. If you don't know about that, that is a trail for people who are visually impaired. They can walk through, and they actually can feel and sort of experience the park through other means. And we thought that was a very, very nice addition to that. So, well, I wish I could give you a plaque. I can, for now, just give you a big congrats. Thank you for submitting, and...
Well, thank you for choosing us. Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, you want a picture? Can we get a picture of Joe and Janine? Because there's our Environmental Advisory Councilperson in charge of the native garden, and there's the man right there in charge of Kids Castle.
Okay.
Can we get those two up there?
Janine, come on.
Who else?
Can we just quickly snip out the title here and put another one in?
Just don't take it close.
Find your part of imagination. Thank you so much. We're really proud of our park. Did you hear me with Kate Bio? I was all over about the park. Did you?
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Barbara's scooching a little bit. Thank you.
I shouldn't be.
Barbara's holding you.
Here you go.
There's just handbonds here.
I'm not a photographer.
That's why you're in the uniform.
That's debatable.
Thank you so much. You came all the way from Havenford, this?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Congratulations. That's a good one.
I told you it was gonna be a fun meeting. Good night. Thank you. Safe travels home.
Thank you, David.
Pension Advisory Committee, more fun continues. Thanks, Sinclair.
Good evening. I'm Sinclair Salisbury, Director of Code Enforcement, and also the recently voted Chairman of the revamped Pension Committee. So the Pension Committee, three, four months ago, was completely revamped. It used to be basically the Supervisors and the non-uniform and uniform representatives and the Township Manager, Finance Director. We have revamped the committee to include five members of the public who are residents of Doylestown with expertise in pensions and finance. And they, along with the two uniformed and non-uniformed members of the committee, make the seven voting members. Then we have the two non-voting members of the Township Manager and the Finance Director, and the liaison is Ken Snyder, who's liaison with the Supervisors. The revised committee meets on the second Monday of every month, and so far, we've met in June, July, and August. June, we formulated our, you know, plans and the way we want to investigate the pensions. And then on the June, we, or rather, July meeting, we had, I think I'm a little bit late there. It was the August meeting, we had Deborah Breed, who is our investment consultant, in to give us a background on the township investments and to explain the investment strategy and the finances that involved with, or the costs involved in the pension. So next month, we are inviting Jim Kennedy from Anderson Associates, who are the Township Actuary, and will, and they, he will be able to give further background information about the pensions, the two pensions to the committee. The whole reason for gathering all this information is to be able to provide accurate recommendations to the Board of Supervisors about the two pension plans going forward. We felt that in the past, we probably didn't have enough expertise within the Township, and that's why the committee has been expanded. And very soon, in the near future, we expect the committee, you know, will be in a position to make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors so that the pensions can move forward in strength and with the best outlook for the employees and the Township. So basically, we're in the gathering information stage at the moment, and forthcoming, you'll probably hear more recommendations coming before the Supervisors.
Thank you, Sinclair. Anybody have any questions? Thank you. Well done.
Thank you.
All right, we have a next presentation from Traffic Advisory Committee, Mark Schreiner.
Just a little intro to this while Mark is getting set up. I had asked Mark to come and talk to the Board of Supervisors because the past couple of months, we've been, they've been spending quite a bit of time talking about one main issue. And I wanted to make sure the Board of Supervisors were aware of those issues, and also get some feedback from this panel as to what alternatives they're gonna be pursuing, whether or not you support them or not. So I just wanted to make sure we give them some direction, because I don't want them going down a path and then coming forward and not getting the support. So let's give them the direction. So ask your questions, and please provide some feedback. So, Mark, go ahead.
And hopefully, the chief and Dave can both chime in on some of the points, because a lot of, obviously, they're part of the group. Ed, can we move ahead one slide? Okay. The members are, myself, I'm the chairman, Doug Rowe, and Carol Schergers were the, appointed by the board. And then from staff standpoint, Chief Logan's on it, Dave, Matt Johnston from Penone, and Ken as our liaison. We meet alternate months, and that's, that frequency has worked out good, but it also means we have very long meetings because of the issues that we uncover in those two month periods, especially during this. It seems like a lot of issues hit, started hitting. We've got a big problem with speeding. And it's to the point where most of our meeting is spent on different speeding issues. I went back to the beginning of '17 and looked at the complaints on the website. Eighteen of 23 were related to speeding. And eighteen of 23 were related to speeding in the Spring Valley or the Pebble Hill area alone, and a few of the others were. So 20 of 23 were related to speeding. The other three were miscellaneous things like traffic light issues, that kinda thing. So a lot of our requests coming in on the website are related to speeding. What our statistics are showing, that only a low number of those speeding issues are...
Go back one slide, Ed.
Go back one slide, Ed. Really, a small number of those actually exceed the enforceable limits. So, meaning by, for instance, the one that's really the hot bulb right now is Spring Valley. The speed limit on there is 35. The enforceable limit would be 45. Very small number are going above 45. But reality is that that, you know, seems high to people. The, you know, so that's a real problem. The volumes aren't really changing. We don't see any real big issues between our observations. They're maybe going up slightly, but it's not a big change, okay? It is particularly pronounced over in the Pebble Hill area. I mean, it just seems like, given the ratio of complaints, I feel like I'm the Pebble Hill committee. That's all I'm dealing with. I mean, it's, it's any number of roads over in that area, including Spring Valley, East, Pheasant. I mean, there's just a whole bunch of ones that we've gotten complaints on. And in almost every case, we don't see a particular problem, but the limits, nonetheless, they, people wanna bring them down, okay? The one, okay, the one issue that we've seen, I'm just trying to think if I have it later in the slides. Okay. Go to the next slide, Ed, please. Okay. What we're trying to do is a couple of things. First off, we wanna review and update the Traffic Calming brochure. We have a brochure that we developed a number of years ago. It's, it's just a fold-out brochure. It describes how to, you know, basically go over traffic calming, you know, traffic calming issues and how to deal with them. It's really made to go out to residents when we start doing the survey, and explains what traffic calming is, some of the ways it can be achieved, so on and so forth, okay? There is a survey that we've also did a number of years ago. This needs to be refreshed a little bit, but it's, it's basically a two-page survey explaining what the survey is all about, and it has about, I'd say, 10 questions related to things like, is there a prob, speeding problem on the road? Is the problem a cut-through, is your road a cut-through road in your perception? Is it a safety problem for pedestrians? Things like that. Some of the standard questions that are on there. These questions were kind of derived from looking at Wormminster's survey, Doylestown Borough Survey, and I think there was, might've been a sample one in a PA handbook, the PennDOT handbook, I think. There's actually a Pennsylvania handbook, it's PA dot, what, 383 is the brochure, or pamphlet. Not pamphlet, it's a big publication. It's a 312-page publication, going over all the different traffic calming, you know, ways. One of the big items, and this is where Chief Logan has been real helpful in trying to explain what's going on. The posted speed doesn't always really change behavior, and one great example, this is Cherry Lane, Cherry Road. That speed was reduced to 25 because of sight distance issues, and reality is, it's not working. It's, basically, people are, know that road, it's straight, they're still going much over it, and a number that was quoted in our June meeting was they spent 192 hours of enforcement in the preceding period, just trying to get that speed down. And just because it's saying 25, people aren't gonna, you know, be doing 25. So that's a big problem also. So unfortunately, we can't use radar, so we're kinda limited in that regard.
We're working on it.
I know, I know. And ironically, Dave just sent out a thing about a teleconference, I guess, with the, some of the Townships about this very issue. I guess it was a teleconference on Friday, I think he, so, okay. What we're recommending for now, one of the big hotspots is Spring Valley, and since Spring Valley is kind of relatively wide compared to many of the roads in the area, we'd like to stripe that road and, and create like shoulder sections, especially where it's wider. And that would give a, like, a walking lane in that area, so it would, I think, make, solve some of the problems, because that's really the issue. It's the pedestrian versus car issues. We would probably then, next step, would conduct a traffic calming survey using our survey. And, you know, if it satisfies the criterias that are listed in the Traffic Calming Handbook, we would look at potential other, other ways to reduce the speed, like speed humps, speed tables, any other issue, any other ways that we could use to reduce it. So that's the way we're trying to progress. Spring Valley is probably our current hot button. There are a couple of other roads that seem to pop up on occasion, but this one seems to be the one with the biggest support so far for potential traffic calming issues. Any questions? And I'm sure there's plenty.
Any questions of this, Mr. Schreiner?
When, when you do the survey, I mean, there's a whole process. If you could explain a little bit within the PA handbook.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you, you can't just go and do stuff. You have to go and follow that process within the...
Yeah. Essentially, there is a flow chart of what you need to do and how, and what order you need to do it. You need to take that survey first, and then find out if 70% of the residents support potential traffic calming solutions. We're not specific on those solutions. It's really up to the committee and the Township to figure out what, what might help. And the engineers. The engineers are probably the biggest help in that regard. But still, that, at 70%, is not easy to achieve. Some of the negatives tend to be snow removal, and also the noise the speed tables would cause, or some of the, some of the other options would cause. I know I've seen chicanes in other Townships, and I'm sure they cause a lot of noise too, and as well as people trying to go straight and avoiding the chicane. I've seen that. So you gotta watch what you do, and, you know. So, yeah, I think that, that survey is your first step, and your next step is seeing the results, and then trying to decide what can be done. I don't know whether Spring Valley reducing it to 25 would be a very good idea. I don't think it'd be enforceable. I mean, I think it'd be the same issues as Cherry. And I think reducing the width, the road diet, as it's called, would be a good first step to, a relatively reasonably priced first step, to try to achieve two things. Get the pedestrian segregation, and also hopefully get the road narrower so people think they need to go slower.
Ryan, you're, Ryan, you there? We can't forget Ryan on the phone.
I'm here. I'm listening.
Any questions?
Nope.
How about anybody else?
I was curious about Cherry Lane. You said the, dropping the speed limit didn't change behavior. Does that mean that they're still going 10 miles an hour over the 25, or are they still going 10 miles over the 35?
They're going closer to 40. Yeah, 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 yeah. We have the stats, and the chief can address that.
Some of the issues with local roads are, basically, it's, a local road is being operated by local motorists. And when, what happens is, we've been keeping statistics on our Township roads for the last 10-plus years. Every time we put the speed tapes out there, the speed timers, we keep the data. So we've been able to show over the course of, since at least, we're talking 20 months worth of data being collected for both Cherry Lane and Spring Valley. We use those two to compare each other. Local roads are being driven by local people. So changing the speed limit is not reducing the speeds, because speeds are set based upon the safe running distance of a highway. There's technical terms in there, and I'm not gonna confuse you with that. But speed limits typically across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania are set by the average speeds driven safely by people that live and drive those roads on a daily basis. Speed limits will affect the occasional motor who doesn't drive down that road and looks for that speed limit sign. So dropping the speed limit is not changing the habits of our local drivers. That's the problem we're having. And I'm just gonna give you, throw a quick stat out there I pulled out this morning. Since January of 2017, we have spent 225 man-hours trying to reduce speeds on Cherry Lane. So enforcement's not working. We cannot get the speeds to within a compliance of that 25 mile an hour speed limit. So we have to, as a Township, and I'm not saying the speed limit shouldn't be 25, because there's certain things that you have to take into account as far as traffic, pedestrians, bicycles, sight distances, multiple things in there. But lowering the speed limit in itself on certain roads just isn't gonna get it done. So as a Township, we need to either look at other alternatives, and the other alternatives are gonna require some funds, whether it be, you know, and there's multiple different calming, traffic calming measures you can use. Speed humps, speed tables, chicanes, striping. So we need to explore those and get a consensus of the Supervisors, whether or not those will be funded and what you guys wanna use. But the Traffic Advisory Committee seems to be, we spin our wheels trying to explain and not have a direction as far as how we're gonna proceed to actually get the residents what they need. Because I'm gonna be quite honest with you, spending 225 man-hours for four, we did 400, over 450 details. I had officers sitting on Cherry Lane. We issued over 350 citations and/or warnings, and it's not working. So that means that the local people are gonna drive that speed limit, or the speed they feel comfortable.
I think, I think East Road has similar issues.
East Road has a lot more issues since they, since the bypass corner went in.
And Poole's Corner.
Poole's Corner went in, because everyone's trying to bypass that corner.
Causes a lot of these problems, I think.
And just to try and, to sum this up, is we're dealing with Cherry Lane and Spring Valley Road, which, people, they're parallel roads within a quarter of a mile of each other, very similar in nature. One's a little bit wider than the other. You have the identical, almost to the tenth of a mile, identical speeds of the 85th percentile, the average speed, and those over the enforcement. So it's like, if I reduce the speed limit on Spring Valley, thinking it's gonna work there? Chances are, it's not, because it didn't work on Cherry. That's the issues we have.
Understood. Okay. Well, I think, you think he should, you guys should do the survey and see what the residents think, and is that the first step?
I think the strapping goes first.
That's part of it. That's one of it. But I also wanted to get some feedback from you guys. Is there anything that you're aware of from a traffic calming perspective that you wouldn't wanna see? Are you, are you open to...
No, nothing, not that I wouldn't wanna see. I can think, I can tell you what I think works, you know, well, is that big sign that says you're speeding.
Yeah.
Your speed is blah. I mean, I see that, and I slow down.
Okay.
I'm just saying, it's one of those things that works.
No, I just wanted to make sure the committee had some direction, and...
And that's one thing, yeah, thanks. The one thing, that sign, in Jersey, I see them as permanent signs, and it's like Hopewell and Princeton area, I see them all the time on roads that are fairly major roads, and they must work. They're even solar-powered. I mean, they're, they're sitting there...
Yeah, I think you're, I think that's worth an investment.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
On these, on these particularly, you know, dicey roads.
Yep, yep.
And you're okay with the striping of Spring Valley?
I am, as long as the residents want it, because they like that rural character. You put a stripe down center of it. Is that what they want?
We don't know. But, I mean...
Are you gonna ask them?
No, I don't think we should.
You're just gonna do it?
I think we should do it, only because it will make it narrower and knock the speed down.
Well, you can't have it both ways.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. It's cake and eat it too. Yeah.
Valley Road, which, people, they're parallel roads within a quarter of a mile of each other, very similar in nature. One's a little bit wider than the other. You have the identical, almost to the 10th of a mile, identical speeds of the 85th percentile, the average speed, and those over the enforcement. So it's like, if I reduce the speed limit on Spring Valley, thinking it's going to work there, chances are it's not, because it didn't work on Cherry. That's the issues we have.
Understood. Okay. Well, I think, you think you guys should do the survey and see what the residents think, and is that the first step?
I think the stripping goes first.
That's part of it, that's one of it. But I also wanted to get some feedback from you guys. Is there anything that you're aware of, from a traffic calming perspective, that you wouldn't want to see? Are you open to-
No, nothing, not that I wouldn't want to see. I can think, I can tell you what I think works, you know, well, is that big sign that says you're speeding. Your speed is blah. I mean, I see that and I slow down. I'm just saying, it's one of those things that works.
The committee had some direction.
And that's one, yeah, thanks. The one thing, that sign, in Jersey, I see them as permanent signs, and it's like Hopewell and Princeton area, I see them all the time on roads that are fairly major roads, and they must work. They're even solar-powered. I mean, they're sitting there-
Yeah, I think that's worth an investment.
Yeah, yeah.
On these particularly, you know, dicey roads.
Yep, yep.
And you're okay with the striping of Spring Valley?
I am, as long as the residents want it, because they like that rural character. You put a stripe down the center of it. Is that what they want?
We don't know. But, I mean-
Are you going to ask them?
No, I don't think we should.
You're just going to do it?
I think we should do it, only because it will make it narrower and knock the speed down.
Well, you can't have it both ways.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, it's cake and eat it too. Yeah.
Mary Lou, do you live over there? Okay.
No. Rick, you okay?
Yeah, you asked for what works, and I go past Doyle Elementary several times a day. And over the years, everybody now knows that there's a police officer in the parking, in the ballfield parking lot. But you never know when he's there. And I assure you, everybody slows down now, because you don't know if he's there. So everybody goes 25. After that, they go back up to 40. So, but it's that unknown presence of that police officer there that I've noticed over the years is, has brought down that, because you go from 40 to 25. So just that wondering if he's there, if that's the right, that seems to work.
It works for me.
Yeah, I think it works for me.
Works for me.
Yeah, yeah.
And just one other comment on what the chief said, and maybe I'm amplifying it, but we, it used to be like 80% of the violators are Doylestown Township residents. I mean, they're, it's us.
Yeah, 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 it's usually-
We're the speeders.
In a lot of the developments, that's the case, for sure, yeah.
Well, you would assume if it's a local road and their local users and their local people.
Oh, that was very politic of you.
No, but sometimes the residents always think it's somebody from the outside. And we did notice on the police report that the tickets and the warning are up significantly this year, significantly. And you would think that that would start to get their attention.
I assume, I assume they're up to me-
My finding is that we're not dropping the speed limits. So I can, I, without, I know Doyle Elementary was your example, I'd be hard-pressed to think that they were there any significant more time than we were out on Cherry Lane. I will beg to differ. And the problem is, we also have the same exact issue on Spring Valley Road. I could literally probably sit an officer there 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and pick off, or, you know, give warnings, tickets, whatever you want to call it, at the same volume.
Didn't it work on Turk, though?
Turk, Turk Road worked, and the reason it worked was because there was a significant sight distance issues. We reduced the speed limit there, and through enforcement and education, we were able to get that speed limit down. So that was easily justified.
And it worked. People are doing 25 there.
Right. Reducing speed limit doesn't work on all roads. It will work on some, but not all. And that's the problem I have with, we've reduced Cherry Lane, it didn't work. My fear is if we reduce Spring Valley Road, it won't work.
And the same thing goes for East.
And I do not want to give residents a false impression that it will work.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks for your work, Mark. All right, visitors' public comment. Anybody? Any visitors or public comment? Do you have anything, Al? I'm looking at you, because I know you have something. Take the podium, please. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Al Clark. I'm a longtime resident of the township, and I'm not much of a joiner, but I now think it's time for me to pay back to the community. And one of the things that I've done has been part of the bicentennial committee. So I made this plaque for, hopefully that this will be a gift that the township supervisors will accept. On the top is the logo of the bicentennial, and the names of the team members underneath. And when I do things, I like to make them a little more personalized than usual. So instead of just using a standard font, I got the autographs of all of those people, and I represent their autographs in this to make it a little more personalized. So I'm going to go off as a gift.
Thank you, Al. Mary Lou is here. Come on up. Let's get the, let's get a picture. Al and the black. So this is all the members of the bicentennial committee. And I'm working really hard. It's a great job.
Thank you.
Can I keep it now?
Of course.
So Steph will put this somewhere.
Thank you.
We'll bring him out of the committee. See it? Isn't that cool?
Any sign.
It's cool. It's very cool.
Any sign.
Any sign.
Any sign. All right. Any other visitors' public comment? Hearing them, we're moving on. Two announcements. Our next meeting is Tuesday, September 18th at 4:00. We're also having a budget meeting on the same day at 2:00. We're going to be closed on Monday, September 3rd for Labor Day. Schools are back in session on September 4th, so we all talked about traffic today. Be careful. September 4th, we're going to have little kids out and about. Thompson Performing Arts Series at Covenant Bank Amphitheater in Central Park continues. On tomorrow night, we're going to have the sensational Soul Cruisers, which is a Motown band. The Sofa Kings are on the 29th. There's a classic rock. On the 25th, excuse me, I missed this one. On Saturday the 25th, Rockin' Back to School. Now, that's a Y2C program with CB Care's Educational Foundation. Those are our kids. They're going to be at the amphitheater from 2:00 to 9:00, playing all day. It's a blast. Wear your earplugs, whatever, but they have so much fun. It's a great program, youth to community, and they get to play all day. Sofa Kings, like I said, on the 29th. That's a classic rock movie. The Lion King is on September 14th. Paddington Number Two is on September 28th. Big Romeo and the Fireworks, we've been waiting for this for six, eight weeks now. Big Romeo and the Fireworks, September 29th at Central Park. It's $5 a carload, but it's worth it. The fireworks are going to be spectacular, the best you've ever seen. And Big Romeo is a big deal. We're going to unfurl the flag, we hope. We're going to have a special presentation from Representative Quinn with a new state flag. We hope to have a caller guard, and we're going to have a whole lot of stuff. So it's Big Romeo, it's fireworks, it's, and birthday cakes. It's our birthday party on the 29th of September. Everyone's welcome. All right, Fido Float, Fanny Chapman is the September 8th. That's Fanny Chapman. If you have a dog, it's a fun thing, but you need special clearance with your dog papers. But Fido Float of Fanny Chapman is September 8th. More detail to follow, what the timing is. Bicentennial Celebration Memorabilia is still stuff for sale. Mercer Tiles, t-shirts, bricks, hats, and shirts. We're going to have a Time Capsule dedication on, we think it's about, we're going to do this around September, yeah, excuse me, December 18th, but we're collecting stuff for the Time Capsule dedication between now and October 15th. If you haven't seen it, if you've got something, you want to get into the Time Capsule, get it to us here by October 15th. And we have a committee that's going to carefully select. It's not a really big time capsule. It's like a little casket or some tiny capsule, but it's that big and it's that white. So inside will be this special container that will last and keep the contents safe for 100 years, and we're going to have the Time Capsule. But we intend to plant the Time Capsule on December 18th. Veterans Day Luncheon, sponsored by the bicentennial committee, is November 11th, 1 to 3, at the Central, at the, yeah, Senior Center. The Bucks County Senior Center, that's on Shady Retreat Road. The Doylestown Fire Engine Company Auxiliary is going to be cooking brunch. There was going to be concert, it's going to be veterans. And Al has got all these nifty wood things that he's going to display and give away at that event. Very cool stuff. So that's open to everyone.
Does it cost anything?
No. It's all free. That's free. The only thing that costs anything is the memorabilia stuff we're selling, and $5 carload for the big, big party. Only because we have to park all those cars. All right, Leaf and, Discount Park tickets are always available. Leaf and Yard Recycling is the third Saturday of each month, 9 to 11, at the New Britain entrance to Central Park. Okay, that's it for that. Minutes approval is the next item on the agenda for the regular meeting on July 17th, 2018. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Any changes, corrections?
Nope. The only thing I noticed was the two people we selected, Mr. Patterson and Mr. Costanzo, I think we spelled their names wrong.
Patterson, and they spelled my name wrong too, but who cares?
About that, yeah.
That's all right. We'll correct, we'll make those corrections.
Correct all names.
Correct all names. All right, with those changes, army corrections, there's a motion to approve the minutes from July 17th.
Move. Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda. Thank you, Ryan. I'll wait for you next time. Next item is the request for CB Care's Educational Foundation for waiver of fees for Pumpkinfest, which is on October 21st, 2018. I'm going to, you know me, I support this organization, but I have to refrain from speaking any further since I am on, I am a member of the foundation board. So there's a request, and what is the pleasure of the board?
The only question was, there's no, what's the amount of the fees?
Do you know what the amount is?
Is it 200, like it always is?
Yeah, it's been around that.
Yeah, it's the same.
I have no problem with it. We-
We've done it earlier.
Yeah, we've done it before.
All right, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. There are two motions? We can do two approvals. All right, so there's a motion by Ken, and Ryan, you want a second? Or was there a motion by you?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, that's passed. Next item on the agenda, reports from the solicitor.
I have things later on the agenda, but not at the moment, Madam Chairperson.
Thank you. Chief?
I'm good. Thank you.
Engineer?
Nothing at this time.
Ooh. Director of Operations, Kids Castle.
Kids Castle proposal. You have a proposal in front of you from Panoni Associates to basically prepare plans for our Kids Castle project. Panoni Associates was kind enough to donate services, and they, previous to this proposal, donated about 25 hours of engineering time. We have looked at the scope, and we've worked closely with Joe regarding the next phase of Kids Castle. And it requires a level of effort that will take some more time, and so we have a proposal in front of them. They have done some grading plan work already, and so this is that, for that work, in the amount of $6,000.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the expense for the engineer for Kids Castle?
I'll make a motion.
I was waiting for you, Ryan.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second? Just so we have questions?
Second.
Okay, we have questions.
The design work that they're doing, how does that differ from design work that was already done? Because I would have thought you would have done some design work to come up with your estimate on what you're going to do.
Do you want to speak tonight?
Yeah, it was a partial grading plan that they had prepared. Actually, we had donated services from SASG Spadle Facial, who is actually located in Warrington, and they did the survey for us. Panoni prepared the grading plan. We basically looked at what was required to basically complete this project, which was construction details, schedule, a cost estimate. And so as we started looking at the project in totality, to build this, that scope grew. And so what we thought was initially just going to be a grading plan, it grew bigger than that. And we're not, we don't have the capabilities as a township staff to design this and approve this and have these stamped plans, which really need to go to DCNR for approval, as well as part of this grant. It is a grant. It's a matching grant. So that's the reason why we had to kind of expand it, and so that's where we came. We did ask Panoni to continue to provide their services.
When you say scope grew, did the overall scope of the project grow?
No. No.
Just the scope of the design grew?
Correct.
Okay. And where would the funds come from?
This will be paid out, we have to, we have some matching funds that the township has to provide as part of the grants. So this will come out of our funds, township funds.
A general fund or out of Kids Castle fund?
General fund, because we have matching, we have, we've committed, the township has committed to matching funds.
So this is, this satisfies a piece of that match?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Other questions? Jen, you have a question?
I do. One of the, one of the items on the contract said that we understand additional topographic information is required outside the wood slot fence for further evaluation and detailing. Does that mean that there's more work to be done in the future?
Yes, the serve, that survey will be done by our surveyors, SASG Spadle, that's the name of the company. Sheheed Smith has donated his services, and that will be part of their scope, that they're going to continue.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you.
Other questions? Rick, anything? Ryan, you have any questions?
Nope. I'm all set up on this. Thanks.
Okay. Calling the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Ryan. All right, next item on the agenda, I lost. Where are we? Don't tell me, don't tell me, tell me. Municipal complex. I was getting there. J.D. Bravo has got some suggested changes in the, on the cost and, you know, the further construction of our municipal complex. Everyone had a chance to review this. Dave, do you have any comments you want to make regarding J.D. Bravo's letter of August 15th, 2018?
No, I think it's self-explanatory unless anybody has any questions.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the change requests and the bottom line increase. Yes, is that a yes?
Yes, yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ryan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Was that an aye for me?
No.
Okay. All right, traffic signal maintenance.
Yep. I actually made a mistake last month when I presented this to you in the amount of Armor &amp; Sons proposal. So my revised recommendation is to award the traffic signal maintenance contract on a yearly basis to Armor &amp; Sons Electric for $6,450. Armor &amp; Sons was the only, this was put out the bid, and Armor &amp; Sons was the only respondent.
So what was your mistake?
The dollar amount.
How much was it? I'm just curious.
I think I had $4,900 by mistake on there. Now, this amount was, is only a few hundred dollars over what their current contract is. I think their current contract totals about $6,100 and change. So again, it was my mistake, so.
So how long is this $6,400 good for?
This is for one year.
This is one year?
This is to do annual traffic signal inspections and reports, and then the work is on top of it on a time-material basis. It's the same contract I think we've had with Armor &amp; Sons for the past 20-plus years.
Yeah, but it keeps going up every year.
Labor keeps going up, unfortunately.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the 2018 traffic signal maintenance contract board?
Execution of the one-year contract for Armor &amp; Sons.
Second.
Questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Just so funny. Robotics. Eric, we've got, we got a visitation from the robotics contracts. Again, everyone had a chance to review it and the changes. It's a $5,775 outlay for an evaluation of our roads. And so the roadmaster and public works can devise a plan and help us to manage the roads in Doylestown Township, all 77 miles. Everyone okay with the changes and the new contract?
Yep. Move to approve.
Second.
Any other comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Aye.
This little voice can move the speaker. All right, tree pruning. We've got a change order from the 2018 tree pruning and takedown. Do you, does any, Dave, do you want to speak to this?
Yeah, the first, the first change order was from Jimmy's Tree and Landscape Contractors. It was the amount of $1,550. Due to the nature of the condition of this tree being on the back of the property of, I think it was 66 Radcliffe, it was hanging over their pool and pool house. It was recommended by Chris Mason in our Parks Department to remove it. I asked Ms. Mason for approval, and we executed this. I'd asked for acknowledgement of this. And then the second change order is for tree pruning for our traffic signals. We are required by the state in our traffic signal permits to prune trees for visual, to visually see the signals in a certain distance. We also have a removal of a hazardous tree at Turk Park near one of the ballfields, as our requirement to remove those trees in terms of our, for the terms of our lease with the county. And we have a tree on 65 Quarry Road that has to be removed. And that second change order, which is not approved yet, and I'm asking for your approvals, $7,990.
Make a motion. We acknowledge the approval of order number one and approve change order number two.
I'll second.
Further questions or discussion? Ryan, you good?
I'm good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
All right, financial policy by the manager. You want to speak to this, or do you want Ken here to speak?
Ken's here as well, but I will introduce it. If you recall, at your last meeting, Mr. Snyder recommended that the staff create a policy addressing our long-term, short-term use of funds when we go out for large projects, and develop thresholds, and set forth implementation rules that we can follow. And so working with our budget analyst and our finance director, we created the attached policy for the board's consideration. And I believe it addresses the concerns that we've talked about at our budget work sessions, and what Mr. Snyder had recommended at your last meeting. And Ken's here, who did a lot of work on this to address any specific questions, but I think the criteria and the funding sources outlined that addresses items that are less than $15,000, and how they'll be expensed over their useful life, as well as those over that $15,000, will be a good way to go forward. And we've provided an example of how we can implement the policy.
Okay. The board wish any discussion on this?
I have a few questions. My first question is, based on our financial statements for last year, our policy was anything over $15,000 would be depreciated, and anything over two years. But we're looking to change that policy to five years. Is that what I've been reading?
Is there any consistency there, Ken? Let Ken address that.
Okay, thank you.
The policy for the $15,000 remains intact, okay? We're going, when we were commissioned by Supervisor Snyder to come up with a policy for a specific project, we wanted to, the Finance Department wanted to create a living and breathing document. So we took a look at several sources, and one of the main sources was the General Finance Officers Association. And, you know, we used them predominantly to come up with this policy. And, you know, we wanted to use examples as far as how they would break down, as far as the depreciation, as far as five to 10 years, you know, over 10 years, 20 years. as far as five to 10 years, you know, over 10 years, 20 years, a large building up to 39 years. So to answer your question, yeah, we are changing a little bit, but the threshold remains the same as far as the $15,000. We wanted to, like I said, create a document that would be a framework for appropriating and dispersing of resources. So working with that, you know, and the budget process, we came up with this document. And the budget process, of course, everyone knows, is our blueprint, you know, of the supervisors. And that also is associated with the supervisor's vision as far as what they want to do going forward as far as the township is concerned.
How does this help you do what you have to do?
To be honest with you, we've always, the Finance Department's been using this, you know.
You've been doing it anyway.
We're doing this anyway. This, this puts it, you know, on, you know, puts it in words, on a document that we can use. You know, one of our goals in the Finance Department is to start putting our financial policies on paper, like our fund balance policy. We have, you know, another, you know, we have a financial policy for appropriating and dispersing of, you know, during, you know, related to large projects and things like that. And the funding sources, as far as whether you have a large capital project, such as a building or a bridge, you know, that's, that's, we have a framework to work with that. We have our capital reserve. We can use funds out of that to pay for, pay for items. The main thing as far as making sure that our capital reserve is funded properly.
Okay. Did you consult with the CPA firm or auditors at all?
To be honest, we took a look at the financial statements, and we thought that our use of the years was a little bit more narrow than what they have in their MDNA report.
Just to follow, what Ken had mentioned, that yes, we've been, they've been doing this, but having it written down, having it documented to make sure that we have that consistency across projects and for year after year after year. And it's something you can show an auditor. Say, this is how we make decisions. And so it does close the loop. I think it's a great document. So I thank you, Ken, Ed, and Stephanie for putting it together.
Okay. Part of this is already a written policy in our financial statements, right? The depreciation, that's part of our significant accounting policies in the notes to our financial statements. So this is going to be a change that'll be noted on our financial statements for this upcoming year then, that there's a change to our significant accounting policies as far as how we depreciate. I don't think it'll be a big deal. I imagine the auditors will...
Isn't it just a clarification of how they've been working the depreciation policies and that this exists, and it's like a note, right, to the financial statements?
We, we have a, an exhaustive schedule for the township and the authority showing all our assets and how they are depreciated. And with the years they use, you know, for depreciation, whether it's a automobile, a truck, a bridge, or a roadway, a line, or anything like that. And this is the information we provide our auditors every year. And, you know, working with our township engineer, we get all that information cobbled together, organized, and this is what we present to the auditors.
Okay, thank you. Ryan, you have any questions?
No. Nothing for me, thanks.
All right. Is there a motion to approve this policy?
Move to approve a new financial policy.
Okay.
I'll second it with just one comment. You have one here, the administrative auxiliary item of $13,306, which is below the threshold, but you have it on here.
It's an example that we can use as far as the funding source is concerned. I believe we're going to fund that out of, you know, for the example, we would fund that out of the capital reserve. Yes, it does fall through, you know, as far as the threshold is concerned, as far as depreciation is concerned, but the funding source is X.
All right, there's a motion. Second, any other questions? All in favor of the, of the policy change?
I, I would feel more comfortable if it was run by our, our auditors, to see what their opinion is on this.
All right, well, let's, we can still approve it and have it run by the auditors. Okay? Close that, tat-tat-ti, close that, or whatever, you know what I mean. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And if the auditors say something that's...
You can change it. We can change it. It's an internal document.
Well, like I said, this is a living, living and breathing document, you know, it's subject to change. As far as, you know, what the GASB, any GASB changes, we can incorporate into this document.
Okay.
But it's, it's a beginning. It's a start.
That's right.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ryan, we're on Supervisor's comments now. Do you have anything?
Nothing for me.
Ken, I guess, Ken. Rick?
I don't know how to take that.
Sorry.
Why don't you think we look alike?
No, you don't. You don't look anything alike.
All right. That's about it. One, it was, it was nice to see the packet, as we all saw in the, for the, up to August, of all the different departments and what they've done. I don't remember seeing that from before, so I think that's great, every X amount of months to put that in there. It brings back some of the short-term memory members who don't remember all that we've done in the last six months. So I thought that was a nice addition to the packet.
Thank you.
Speaking of the packet, it's 366 pages long. And it's just my thoughts. What happens when you have so much is you start flipping through and maybe you miss something that's important. And Dave puts a lot of information in there. But do we need a list of the items at the contractors? 38 lock nuts for 7 cents, things like that, you know? I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but, you know, it's, it offuscates all the important things in there when you have a 22-page list of items, et cetera. So that's my, my thoughts. The other, the DTMA is finished up basically in furlong. It's just got some cosmetic cleaning up to do, and the billing will be going out in the end of next month, I believe it is. And the sewer, they got the milling machines out there, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
And they're posting in the Pebble Ridge section for the sewers. So that's moving along at a, at a good pace, I guess. That is all I have.
Okay. Ken?
Nothing additional.
Okay, thanks. Jen?
I had a couple wonderful meetings with my committees. The first I wanted to mention was the Parks and Rec and Ways and Means Joint Committee meeting related to the new community building that they're looking to propose to the board and the financing options. Right now, it's moving along. It's gone on to Ways and Means to look at the financial aspects of it. So hopefully, they'll be bringing that to the board within the next couple months, hopefully next month, but we'll see. I've also, I also went to the Environmental Advisory Committee meeting, and those meetings are jam-packed. These people want to work hard, I guess, because there's a lot of stuff to get done. But I did want to announce that there's three more days before the end of the 200 Trees Promotion. So if you're looking to get your two, your tree for the bicentennial, you only have three days. So go on the webpage.
What's our count now?
Hundred and five and a half. And a half.
What?
How do you get 100 trees?
Well, somebody, they're sharing a tree.
Share a tree.
Yeah, their $200 is an oak tree, and if, if, when you buy a tree, your name will be emblazoned in some kind of permanent display that you're part of the township oak tree. In addition to the oak trees, we also have a...
We have over 100 maple trees that were donated by the Bucks.
Beautiful. So we have a lot of trees, but the oak trees sale is stopped, and we have to put the order in this Friday. So that's it. That's it. Okay, thanks.
So in addition to that, August 25th is the maintenance day for that beautiful native garden, plant garden that was, we just got a part of our award for. So if you want to come, dig in some dirt, pull some weeds, talk to some amazing people, that'll start at 9:00 AM and end at 11:00 AM, and hopefully, it'll be a good day for that. And the AEC is working on a lot of things related to the overall environmental health of our township, looking at different ordinances. And so hopefully, they'll be coming to the board soon.
Very good. Thank you. We had a great golf outing yesterday, proceeds went, are going to the Doylestown Township Park System. I think we raised some money. It was a fun day, beautiful weather. It was canceled three times, so we're lucky we got it in before it started to snow. Anyway, Cutts, our Cutts, our little Cutts Elementary School did a Happy Birthday Doylestown Township Celebrating the Bicentennial. This video just won a countywide award, and it's been submitted now for a statewide award. These kids are like sixth, fourth, fifth, and sixth graders. You can see the video. It's, it's, it's a lovely little, lovely video. It's like 10, 15 minutes long, maybe longer, on YouTube. Just Google Happy Birthday Doylestown Township.
And it's on, you can easily access it from our website as well. There we have a video button on the right-hand side. You'll see a number of items come up, and you'll see that Happy Birthday is probably put out.
Everyone should look at it. It's adorable. If you watch Sunday morning on CBS, you'll get it right away. All right. That's all. I can go on, but I'm not going to. Proposed fireworks. We have a public hearing, two public hearings tonight, one on the fireworks ordinance.
If I may, there's two components of this. The first is your consideration of the zoning ordinance, which would provide that folks can sell fireworks in the limited industrial zone, subject to various conditions. This arose because the state, by the adoption of recent legislation, opened up the sale of fireworks in Pennsylvania rather significantly. And like other municipalities throughout Bucks and other places, the need was to determine a way in which we can regulate the sale of fireworks, not the utilization or, or use of them, but rather the sale. And we prepared a draft ordinance, the Bucks County Planning Commission, and your planning commission review demanded a couple of minor changes. They have been incorporated. It's been duly advertised, and it's ready for your consideration.
Everyone had a chance to...
Requires a public hearing as well.
Opening up the public hearing now. Everyone had a chance to, at least the supervisors had a chance to review the proposed ordinance. It was advertised, it's been on, been around.
And I just had one question, I guess. Jeff, in your letter, and I apologize, I thought I was at the planning commission meeting, but maybe I dozed off. I don't understand the difference with your, your comment of 175-16 versus 175-84, where the planning commission wanted one thing.
What, you mean the definition?
Yeah, you put in your letter that enumerating the same requirements in 175-16 and also in 175...
I just, I think I just referred back to that. Did I not, on the criteria for conditional uses?
Again, I wasn't clear. You said...
In other words, instead of, instead of repeating your current criteria for conditional uses.
Right.
I incorporated that criteria into this ordinance related to sale of fireworks, instead of repeating it all over again.
So it keeps the ordinance itself shorter because you're referring back...
You're not going to repeat what you already have.
So you have to go to the conditional use section.
If nobody else has any comments, I'm fine.
Okay. What, this, this opening page from you, Stephanie, it refers to New Year's Eve to January 1st.
That's nothing to do with this ordinance.
All right, that's all I wanted to...
This is the second one.
That's the next conversation.
I should have put it at the bottom, but I knew it was an important topic, so I made sure it was up front.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next.
The next, the next piece is, there was some discussion at your last meeting about the fact that the proliferation of fireworks is creating some issues for many residents, and you directed your manager to follow Jen's lead by trying to find some ordinances and some ideas about regulating the actual utilization of fireworks. And you need to give some direction about preparing an ordinance based on some conversation you're about to have.
Well, I don't want to be the one talking all the time, so.
I think the most annoying thing about local fireworks is you'll hear one at 8:00. Then you'll hear another one at 8:45, and you'll hear about 7:00 at 9:00. Nothing for an hour. Then you'll hear, then they start all over again for about five minutes, and then they stop. And then by the time you're off to sleep, they start again. It's just like this pitter-patter of noise throughout the night. And you don't know where they're coming from. They sound like they're right in your backyard. And they're just, just annoying. They're not, it's not a pleasant experience. It's just annoying. So I don't know how you regulate that.
Well, you, if you saw some of the specimen ordinances, they regulate by way of time, that is, time of the day, and also by days of the year, trying to reflect, you know, when those things happen, July 4th, New Year's Day, New Year's Eve.
Like duration of 10 minutes.
Super Bowl wins, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
So if the board's so inclined, the consideration that you might have Mr. Garten prepare an ordinance that would be a standalone ordinance that regulates the use of consumer fireworks on properties within the township. Violations of the ordinance would be enforced by our police department, so reasonable fines section would need to be included in that ordinance. I'm suggesting perhaps restrictions. Days when consumer fireworks may be utilized in the township would be New Year's Eve to January 1st, the Chinese New Year.
When is that?
That usually falls either in January or February. It, the date does change. But the Chinese New Year, Memorial Day, July 4th, Christmas Eve or Christmas Day. The hours we could restrict perhaps from 5 to 10, and a duration of 10 minutes could be done. And except for that, New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, time to shoot off would maybe be 11:45 to 12:15. Again, that 10-minute timeframe. And each property within the township would be restricted to shooting fireworks one time per day on the days identified.
What does that mean, one time per day? What could that mean?
Means one, they only get to shoot them off once on that day.
So that, so if they have one pitty-patty little firework, that's it, that's all they can do?
For 10 minutes, that's all they can do. So pick your, pick your time, one time.
It's really hard to enforce. I mean, it's, it sounds like...
I know it's harder to enforce, but it was...
Look at him. You don't know where, you don't know which neighbor shooting them off.
I know. That's the problem. That's the problem. I'm trying to address...
They're up in the air. You don't know where they're coming from.
I think Ryan had a question. Yeah, Ryan.
Yeah, no, I just, just a comment. I mean, one, I think this is going to be incredibly hard to enforce. You know, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, but, but I also wonder if, and Jeff, maybe you could answer this. I mean, you know, we have these like set holidays, but let's say somebody's getting married in their backyard, and they want to do fireworks as part of their, you know, the wedding, right? I mean, is there a way that you could apply for a permit so we actually know what's going off? I mean, if there was a process like that, then at least our, at least we would be aware of, hey, this is, I mean, maybe it's a standard for everything, like we, we, and there has to be some sort of process that people go through if they want to set fireworks off. I don't know. It's just a thought. Maybe that's too much. But I just think if, if we get so, if we put these restrictions and they're so restrictive, it's going to be like I see down here where it's like you have to wear a bike helmet if you're under 18. And I haven't seen anyone wearing a bike helmet in the last week, right? And, and cops ride by them and don't do anything. So I don't know. I'm just, I'm just kind of wondering if there's like a middle ground that we could fall into where people still feel like they have the freedom to, you know, use fireworks through, again, some sort of process.
In fact, the manager and I discussed that today, and I think that we think that it makes sense, because you're not, it's impossible to cover all the necessary religious holidays and the like. And, you know, this day and age, we have a very multicultural community, and we don't know whether there's a holiday for Hindus that sort of prompts the need to have a display of fireworks. We don't know that kind of thing. And we thought it would be certainly appropriate to have some process where just a simple application without a lot of money be made to the township, and the manager or somebody else can sign off, and you can have your fireworks on a given day. I mean, I think that could work. However, you guys need to decide what you think the, you see, you're right. If you over-regulate, people are going to, are not going to obey it, and it's might as well not even have it. So you sort of have that, that tough decision-making if you even decide to do it.
Kind of like speed limits.
Sort of.
Yeah. One of the things, too, about asking for, you know, having them apply for a permit or something, I mean, that's not the person you want to control. I mean, it's the residents, the residents sitting next door to them that's offended by it. And they won't, they still won't know that they're going to have fireworks. So we really didn't solve anything.
You may, listen, you may want to think about this some more before we go off and do an ordinance, because it's...
Yeah. In gathering this information, have you looked at other townships and what other communities are doing?
There's not a lot in the, in the townships for Pennsylvania. Most of them are coming from Indiana.
Lumsford has one, I think. Lumsford has one, I think.
Yeah, they're working on one controlling it in their parks. I talked to their manager.
Within the parks.
Yeah. Which we already have. So we're already, we're already there with that one. But, you know, I know it was something that was talked about at the last meeting, and I wanted to take a stab at it, and the point, you know, that Ryan brought up, Jeff and I talked about today. I mean, one of the things that having some sort of a, an application or something, if we knew that people were doing, were going to have, shoot off the fireworks on any special occasions, at least if the resident did call the next day or that day and say, hey, what's going on? At least we would have a record of it, and we could say, oh, that was, you know, the Smith's house, they were, they were having a wedding, they got a permit, they were okay, we knew about it. That would be the only thing that we would be able to share with them.
You know, I serve as the liaison to the dog park, and I gotta tell you, it's, it's really hard for animals.
Yes.
You know, these dogs, they're not used to this noise, and they already, they're trembling with thunder, but, but with the, it's really difficult for the dogs. I don't want to be, I don't want to be a killjoy, but it's difficult for creatures.
It is.
Not just dogs.
It's wild animals, too. And there's certainly already restrictions, you know, shooting them off, as we know, 150 feet from an occupied building, things like that. So it does, you know, kind of limit it somewhat in certain areas.
It certainly does not.
But it's still.
The noise of fireworks does not stay at 150 feet away from somebody's dwelling.
Yeah, I don't believe people understand 150 feet anyway, because I've seen the fireworks being shot off very close to residential homes.
Let's give us some thought and see if we can, like, figure this out better.
Good.
You've got a whole lot to look at. She'll send you out all the draft, other ordinances are around, just to give you some idea.
Good.
All right, guys, thanks. All right, moving on to the next, did we do everything we had to do with that?
Yes.
All right, Tradesville zoning ordinance, Bray Long Schmidt.
If I may, I'll go through some background, it may take a few minutes, but I think it's appropriate.
I agree.
In the late winter of 2014, Toll Brothers approached the township at a staff meeting about the prospect of doing a lot averaging subdivision for the Bray property, which is approximately located at the intersection of Lower State Road and Bristol Road, and it would have yielded 26 single-family dwellings. Very little conversation took place for the better part of a year, other than the fact that by late 2015, Toll Brothers had entered into an agreement not only with Mr. and Mrs. Bray, but also the owners of the Long Track, which would now encompass 51.7 acres. There were some early discussions about street furniture improvements, a trail, public water, public sewer to the site. Early on, there were some suggestions from Toll, it would be easier and less costly if public water was brought from Warrington Township. Your planning commission, the mid-2015, reviewed a sketch plan that now had 41 lots. In fact, they did a site tour. At this time, as you know, the township was engaged in moving forward with the Pebble Hill Woodridge Public Sewer Project, and the completion of that project would have been instrumental in providing a method means for Toll Brothers to bring public sewer to their two properties. In 2016, there were general conversations about what Toll would do with respect to facilitating, bringing public sewer to the site, and how that may impact the public, pardon me, the Pebble Hill Woodridge Project. In 2017, they entered into an agreement with the owners of the Schmidt Track, which added another 1.17 acres to the site, now totaling 53.66. Toll Brothers asked the township if any density improvements would be available, if Toll contributed toward the cost of the Pebble Hill Woodridge Project. Township advised Toll to make a proposal, and township would consider a reasonable approach. A draft ordinance was submitted by Toll Brothers, has been the subject of several meetings with the Doylestown Township Planning Commission, as well as staff, and has now been recommended for approval by the planning commission. The ordinance, if adopted, would establish the Tradesville Public Improvement Overlay District, consisting of four parcels, one of the purposes of which would be to contribute toward the cost of public sewer that would be provided to the Pebble Hill Woodridge Project, and also obviously bring sewer to this site. The boundaries of the property for the overlay district would be the four properties along Bristol Road that I mentioned. If adopted, it would allow, within the overlay district, single-family attached dwellings, which is townhouses, at a density of three dwelling units per acre, subject to various lot minimums, which would require, would require 40% open space of the base site area, previous surface restrictions, maximum length of buildings, and architectural renderings to be submitted as part of final plan. Units can be either condominium units or fee ownership units, but would be all townhouses. The ordinance would provide that the site would be connected to public water and public sewer through the Doylestown Townness Authority as far as public water, and through the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority as far as public sewer. All the requirements of an environmental nature would be, continue to be required, except there would be a slight limitation, restriction on the libarian buffer for stormwater management, could be up to 15%. At the issuance of each building permit, the developer would contribute $27,600 per unit for off-site sanitary sewer costs. The board previously authorized advertising the ordinance, which has been done, with the appropriate notices appearing in the intelligencer, and a copy was provided to the Bucks County Law Library. Copies of the ordinance were also sent to your planning commission and to the Bucks County Planning Commission, both of which have commented, and both of which have recommended approval. Since this is an ordinance, and I would also note that the property was posted appropriately in accordance with the MPC, so your consideration of this proposed order now requires the conduct of a public hearing.
Okay. I'll throw it out to the public, but I have some questions. So, on page three, the $27,600 impact fee, that's per the sale of each of their units?
Per building permit.
Per building, referred to the sale of each of the units. So this, where does that, does that go to offset the cost to the Pebble Hill Woodridge people, or is it just going to a cash fund?
It's external to their project.
I know.
And it goes toward the infrastructure improvements as far as Pebble Hill and Woodridge.
Okay. So do we know what the net effect is for those units there that are having to put sewer?
If you, I think, I think if you multiplied the number of units by, I think, one, whatever the number is, I think it.
Over $3 million, you would end up with about almost 15,000.
15,000.
Reduction in the cost.
Reduction in the price.
To, for each homeowner in the 252 unit.
252, yeah.
Okay. And the, and with this development, even though it's intense, it's still, I mean, it still provides for a lot of green space.
It does, and it's age-targeted, too, which means it's not, and it's not age-restricted, but it's age-targeted, which means it's likely not to have a lot of children.
Lot of children. Okay. All right, that's all I, that's all I had. Anybody else?
You have to make a motion in a second and have a public hearing without.
Okay.
I'll make the motion and one comment. Second.
Is there a second? Okay. All right, welcome for a public hearing.
Did any, anyone have any discussion about the Bucks County Planning Commission verbiage change?
I think we made that change.
Who are you referring to? Can you point us to where you're talking?
Well, the entrance drives. It said, originally, it was in lieu of providing two separate entrances. The development shall provide a separate emergency access. The Bucks County Planning Commission suggested that should be revised to state that proposals will be reviewed on a case-by-case basis by the township engineer and emergency services department to determine whether one or two primary entrances to the site are required.
Is that per unit?
No, that's for the whole.
For the whole project? Oh.
I think there was some input from those folks from before, when we did the ordinance. Am I right, Stephanie?
I believe so, yeah.
So is H standing, then? We're talking about page three.
I think if you require an extra entrance, it would reduce by some good number, the number of units.
I don't think it's suggesting that. I think it's just saying, for clarity, instead of just saying, we're going to have one entrance and one fire entrance, that the township should look at each one on a case-by-case basis. In some cases, you may want two entrances for the next one or the third one down the road. And that's what the Bucks County suggestion was changed.
I don't have a problem with it.
I just wanted to know if anybody wanted to discuss it.
I think that'll come as part of the land development process, too, Jeff.
Can you clarify? Are you talking about, like, the unit itself?
No, no, the overall.
The whole property. We suggested.
I got the overall property, then why would you be looking at one after another?
Well, this is, this is an ordinance for, it's going to be, could be used in other instances.
Oh, oh, all right. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just focusing on this project here.
And that's what we, I think we made the decision for one normal, one and one emergency, because it fit this project.
Yes.
And the Bucks County Planning Commission is saying, maybe you ought to take a step back and say, anything in the future, have the township make the.
I understand.
Case-by-case.
See what you're saying.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, that, that seems a reasonable amendment, don't you think?
Yeah, I mean, it's not, not required to, but you still consider it.
This is a consideration, yeah. Understood.
Let me ask it this way, too. Is that considered a significant change?
No.
All right, then I'm okay with it.
We don't have to re-advertise.
No.
Okay.
Then I'm okay with that change that the Bucks County Planning Commission made on entrance drives.
Do you guys have anything else?
Nope.
We have, Sam, you have to take a, you have to go to the podium. Anybody has any comments? Please feel free.
He raises his hand.
I didn't call first.
I just have a point of information question. What is the?
Have to identify who you are.
Oh, my name's Samuel Colodny. I'm a Doylestown Township resident. So I've got a point of information about the cost that the Pebble Woods residents are paying to hook up to the sewers. And how much, how much do the residents of Pebble Woods area have to pay in order to hook up?
At this point in time, the Pebble Ridge-Woodridge area, the assessment is $34,000 for the line in the street. That's the estimate that we've published and put out there, and all the information on our website. So if this would occur, you're, you're taking that total amount and doing the math and everything, and I think we came up with around almost $15,000 that's going to come off that price.
Okay. Well, great. That's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Approximate.
Approximate. I mean, there's other costs associated with the project, but that's what we're.
The reason I was asking was, I just wanted to see if there was some kind of parity between what was proposed for this and what the Pebble Woods people.
Yeah, they're going to benefit.
Yes, indeed. Thank you. So you have a question?
My name's Chris Boyd. I live at 3267 Hillside Drive, that's right across the street from the proposed townhomes. So I have.
Warrington?
It's a Chalfont mailing address. It's technically Warrington Township. I'm still learning the lines and everything.
I used to live in that neighborhood.
We welcome you.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
I've lived in this area my whole life, Butler, Unami, CB West graduate. And part of the reason why I decided to stay in the area is because it's, you know, it's nice and quiet and, you know, but that, so part of the reason for my concern is, is that there's going to be 137 townhomes getting built across the street from me. And without getting too off-topic with speeding and, you know, line of sight, in the morning during rush hour, trying to make a right onto Bristol Road is already, you know, you have got, yeah, you've got about a two-second window to decide whether you're going to floor it or just wait. So to add 137 homes and, you know, you can do traffic studies and whatnot, but at the end of the day, it's going to be about or more two cars per the home. So that's about 270, you know, or more cars per house, and everybody's going to be going to work at the same time, everybody's going to be coming home at the same time. It's concerning. So it's my hope to, you know, to not make that change in zoning. That, that's essentially it. I just wanted to voice my concern.
Oh, very real and genuine. Thank you.
I'd like to.
Yes, you have to. It's all land development, right?
I'm Lita Harvey on Mon Hill Side Drive as well.
Can you please go to the microphone and state?
Oh, I'm Lita Harvey on Mon Hill Side Drive as well. My concern is, just as his is, where is all this traffic going to go? We have, school's starting, where are the school buses going to go? You're going to start the kids earlier so they can get to school on time? And it's, where is the entrance and the exit's going to be? You have Bristol, that's backed up all the time. You have Lower State, that's one big traffic jam. Where is it going to go? You're putting more and more cars on the road, and they're country, country roads.
We know. Yep. Valid concerns, valid concerns. But we have a whole land development process.
We haven't even started to, I mean, part of the process is going to be, they're going to do a traffic study, they're going to show us a number, they're going to do a count of, of the cars every 15-minute segments or something, and, and so we're going to get that picture as we start going through the process of what impact it's going to have, and then.
I appreciate that. When we first heard about this, it was supposed to be only homes. And then all of a sudden, I don't know, I was on vacation, all of a sudden it came up, all these townhomes were in effect now. So I just want to know, you know, what happened from the process of the homes being built there to townhouse, townhouses now? That's my, I want to know where.
And I think Mr. Garten explained that at the beginning in his opening of the process. He, he did go over that, how it, over the years, it evolved.
But this is in, only in a matter of months that we're, that I have heard of it.
No, no, it's been at least.
We've been with our planning commission.
A year and a half or so.
Yeah. Traffic is a big problem. Wherever you live, it's a big problem. And as soon as a new development goes in, of course, there's going to be more traffic. A while is going to go in, there's going to be more traffic. That's the, you know, it's the price of living in a community where there are people who want to be here. However, as, as Mr. Colow, as the planning commission liaison, as the program, as the development proceeds, there, these, these issues are going to be considered, and you can't solve the traffic issues, but you can help mediate them, mitigate them.
Mitigate. Did I say mediate?
That works, too. And mitigate. You can, you can help move, you know, consider them and make, I don't know, allocations, entrances and exits, I don't know, however they do it. But there are ways, buffers and, you know, alterations to topography, all kinds of things like that that help along. The developer has the right to develop.
And I understand that.
And we, we need to, we need to determine whether we're going to allow this kind of intensity as well. The, the, I'll be frank with you, there, there's a very big benefit to many residents by this development, not only the people who are going to move in there and live there, but the people who already live here. So that's a big consideration for us as well. I'm not, I'm not going to ignore that fact, and I think that's a very big consideration. So.
And as you mentioned, the traffic study, they also have templates or tables where they're going to model a 137 resident condominiums, and they're going to add those numbers into it. And they have to come within certain guidelines. And Barbara's right, it could be intersection changes, it could be widening, who knows? We don't know until we get that data. And that's probably a couple of months down the road, at least.
Okay. But to stand by, you know, you're not, you're not a township resident, but you're a resident nonetheless. You belong here.
That's right, as a resident.
No, you're always welcome. No, you're always welcome.
So how does a non-township resident know what state it is in the land development process that they're going to be talking about traffic? process that they're going to be talking about traffic?
It's on our website, our planning commission on our calendar. And you can always look for that particular property to be listed on an upcoming agenda. Our planning commission meets fourth Monday of the month. You're more than welcome to always call the office to see if it's on. The Braylong property is on the agenda and be happy to let you know. And also, at the planning commission meetings, when we met initially, there was elected officials from Warrington Township that were in attendance. So, they're aware of it, and they were...
Well, I just...
It's the people that are living there.
Right. So, we would encourage you to look at the, look at the, look at the planning commission agenda and attend those meetings and make sure they're dealing with the issues that you bring up.
Okay.
That's where the rubber hits the road.
Yeah. If you're going to have any more for conversation, just go back up there, because he's going to yell at me.
For me? I got a mic. Oh, you're talking about...
All right. So, any further comment or questions about the proposed ordinance overlay district?
I would suggest to you that the ordinance needs to be amended consistent with Mr. Colow's comments. So, if the original mover would include that modification and the seconder, then we can proceed along that line.
Mr. Colow, do you care if we do that?
I will do that.
Yes.
I think you just did. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
You're just doing that.
I'll make that modification.
Modification.
And improving the Traceville Public Improvements Overlay District ordinance, yes?
Yes.
Favor.
There's a motion in a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. All right.
Did Ryan vote?
Aye.
Thanks, Ryan. All right. So, you folks from Warrington, make sure your supervisors know that you are here, invite them to come to our planning commissions, they're always welcome, and we will endeavor to keep you informed, but we're going to ask you to look, look for it and be, and keep yourselves informed. Thank you. Thanks for coming. All right. Next item on the agenda, unfinished business. We're talking about amendments to the, to our invasive species to include or not include grouping or punching bamboo. And I think it was a...
Clumping.
Clumping, clumping bamboo. And it's the recommendation of our EIC that we do not allow this species because it's still nonetheless quite invasive, even though it's not... Wow, who gets this? So long, everybody! Even though it's not the tall bamboo, it doesn't stay clumped, it does nonetheless.
They do say it does. If you don't know which kind of clumping it is, you could have a problem.
Okay.
And also Judy Stern-Goldstein, our township planner, also weighed in on that as well.
Okay. So, we're just going to pass on that, we're not going to do anything with it.
You want me to send a letter that you're, you are not...
I would send Judy's recommendation with it.
And that you're not interested.
Yeah, we're not going to...
Change.
Change our invasive species outline. All right. Where am I? Don't tell me.
You're at...
New business.
Yep.
Hookup to public sewers 199 Iron Hill Road, request hookup. Is there any problem with this? Should we...
They're, they're sitting on an existing sewer line, they're in the upper tier of the township.
But I mean, is there any problem with approving?
No.
No.
Is there a motion to approve the 199 hookup?
I'll move to approve.
Thank you.
I did have one question. On the, as soon as I get to it, I saw on the, I thought on the application, it said 400 gallons a day, but on the response that, from Bucks County, said we can accept 250.
Someone who made the application didn't realize what the state standard was for an EDU.
Yeah.
It's 250.
250.
Okay, so, so what's wrong in the, in the application? Okay.
You okay, Ryan?
Yep.
Okay. There's a motion to approve the 199 hookup, 199 Iron Hill hookup. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Questions, anybody? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then we've got the Michael Baker in. Michael Baker International, you know, Shady Retreat Safe Route to School proposal. I suspect we have money for this, right?
I hope so.
Tom's going to donate it.
Yeah, $985,000.
Tom is here, Kelso here, to speak to it, Ryan.
And I'm with the Bike and Hike Committee, and I'm here tonight to request the board consider approving the Michael Baker contract for $230,000 for the design and all the permits and approvals for the Shady Retreat bike path. And that is being funded primarily from a transportation, a TAP grant, Transportation Alternatives, under the Safe Route to Schools program. And I think it's the same grant we use for Lower State Road.
Yep.
It is.
It funds 100% of the construction, but the township's responsibility is to pick up the design and permitting and approvals. And that works out to about a 75-25 match. So, it's one of our better grant programs. The only problem is, and I think that's why that number is so high for design and approvals, is that there's a lot of approvals to get when you have to go through PennDOT on everything. And I think you understand the route. We've talked about it when we did the grant application. It's a, it's a significant piece of our proposed trail system. It connects a lot of units to the overall trail program. So, we're anxious to move forward with it. It's a 1.1-mile trail that goes through a rather complex area. We did have Baker, we met with Baker a few weeks ago and had them revise their proposal to address some of the problems we thought we had, or we did have with the Lower State Road project. One in particular was the design of the ADA ramps was done as part of the construction, not the design, and it held us up months. That was the big problem. The trail was almost done, all those ramps were left undone.
Wondering what happened, yeah.
And we thought it was worth the extra money, and there are 26 of them, I think, in this project, 26 different ramps. We thought it was worth getting done up front by Baker instead of letting the contractor get a sub to do it. It just was too much of a problem, and I wasn't real happy with some of the resulting design either. It may have met PennDOT standards, but it wasn't quite what we wanted in every case. And then the other thing was to look at these mid-block intersections, or crossings, and the regular, you know, intersection crossings for the bike path, too. We met with the Traffic Advisory Committee on that already, and we wanted Baker to provide alternatives for those. We wanted to have a little, spend a little more time on each one of them and look, have time to deal with the Traffic Advisory Committee on them. So, they're going to be looking at a range of options, and there are some significant ones here, too. And we have the opportunity to upgrade some of those intersections, particularly State Street and Burpee Road as part of this project, too, and look at site distance, look at timing of the traffic signals. So, we asked them to put a little more effort into that, and that's included in the scope.
Okay. So, what I'm hearing from Stephanie is that a portion of it has to be paid this year, and then this is for 2015 and '20.
Yeah, this is over, we don't expect Baker to be done with their work until 2020.
Okay.
That's when they have to be done with it.
They have to be done in August of 2020. We have to have everything completed in order to get the money so they can put it up to bid that fall.
Fall of 2020.
Yeah.
2020.
It takes that long to get through all their approvals.
Yeah, because of the environmental aspect of the clearances and everything that we needed part of the permitting.
Well, and the bridge issues.
And the bridge and everything, all the permitting, yeah.
Going across the bypass.
And it's a big project.
Yeah.
All right.
Will they start this year? Will we spend a portion of this?
Well, a small amount this year.
Yeah, they'll start.
It'll be a small amount this year that we'll end up incurring, just starting the setup of the design and everything.
And we'll be budgeting over the next two years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Anybody want to, any considerations, questions, ready to go with this? Ken, I see a frown. How do I turn that frown upside down?
Fine, $230,000. No, I'm okay with it. I really am.
We'll entertain a motion to approve the contract to Michael Baker to get this Safe Route to School Trail underway.
I'll make that for Ryan. Approve the environmental, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong thing.
Your Shady Retreat.
Yeah, Shady Retreat Safe Route to School Trail. Okay, Ryan?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, as always, Tom.
Yes, thank you.
All right. The minimum municipal obligations...
You just acknowledged having been given a copy of them.
We've got it. It's in on. It's onerous. It's a million, $1 million.
Yeah, but your minimum, your minimum municipal...
Million-five.
Your MMO is actually 517, fourth, oh, that was last year.
It's the total.
Oh, the total.
I added everything up.
Between the two, the 530.
And it's a fine contribution.
Right. Ken wanted me to bring the information from last year in case you had any questions on it. I did bring that.
Does anyone have any questions? Hearing them, we're moving on.
Yeah, no, I, and I reemphasize what Barbara says, we're spending a million dollars a year for employees for their pension.
Yipper.
That's right.
All right. Records retention disposition. That's, that means we go through all the old papers and throw them out.
In accordance with state law, however.
Right. Which is very, we are prescribed, you know, only like so many words, so many letters, so many papers, yes. So, is there a motion to approve the records retention disposition resolution?
I'll move to approve.
I have a question.
Okay, question?
Or a comment. It's more of a comment. I would just, we do this on a regular basis, and when I look at the schedule of how long we should retain them, we always seem to find some ones that are older than the retention requirement, we're finding older stuff.
Yeah.
And I would just encourage us that when we go into the new building, we get rid of all that old stuff. It's the perfect time to get rid of it.
Yes, Steph, when you free time, get rid of it. Do it.
Don't have anything older than what we need.
Okay. Okay. Hear that? All right.
I'll talk to my department heads, make sure they've...
And the chief.
And the chief, yeah.
And the chief.
I got people who love their paper, and they don't want to get rid of it. And a lot of it, we, I'm not going to ask Jackie how much of it was dicks. I was just going to say that.
Throw the man, he's the boss. All right.
She did find some from his office, but...
All in favor, I think, of it.
Yes, there's a motion.
There was a motion, and it was a second.
There was, there was a motion and a second.
For the resolution. Oh, for the resolution, thank you. I thought we were... All in favor?
Aye.